Good evening. The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News on Friday, August 21st, 2020, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
President.
Councilman Good.
President.
Councilman McKenna.
President.
Councilman McCray.
President.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom.
President.
Vice President Armati.
Here.
Council President Hakiday.
Here.
We have all members present in form.
Thank you. Do we have any communications from the mayor?
Correspondent stated September 9th, 2020, from his honor, the mayor, Adrian O'Mapp, addressed to members of the governing body that's requesting the advice and consent of the appointment of Abby Levinson to serve as the business administrator for the city of Plainfield.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now have communications for the mayor. We have a short presentation regarding our virtual project, an overview. Mayor, did you want to introduce this, or do you want to go right to the individuals at the county to have them go through this presentation?
Yes, go right to it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
President, real quick, can we get a little muting for the panelists? Because it sounds like somebody's at a bird sanctuary and some instruction going on.
Okay. If you're not speaking, please mute your microphones to preserve the integrity of the record so that everybody can hear.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to start?
Please go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Directors, staff, and citizens of Plainfield. Thank you very much for the opportunity to meet with you this evening in the virtual environment. My name is Ray Sullivan, and I represent Union County Division of Engineering. During my 10 years with Union County Engineering, I've been afforded the opportunity to manage the process of many infrastructure improvements for the city of Plainfield. Tonight, our design team wished to introduce you to our latest project in the realm of intersection improvements. The county, in cooperation with the NJTPA, NJDOT, Federal Highway Administration, and Michael Baker International, would like to introduce you to a federally funded project for the city of Plainfield. It is my pleasure to introduce a friend and a colleague, Ms. Christine Mittman, who is a project manager specializing in the local safety program with the NJTPA. Christine?
Hi, good evening, everyone, and I thank you for allowing us to do this presentation. Brad, could you move to my slide, please?
Sure.
Thanks. In case you're not familiar with the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, we're the Metropolitan Planning Organization for northern New Jersey. We distribute the federal funds through a variety of programs. I manage the local safety program and the high-risk rural roads program. We use a special pot of money called Highway Safety Improvement Program Funds. It's data-driven. We provide lists to the counties to show them where their high-crash corridors and intersections are, and we do a solicitation. This came to us as an application from Union County. We accepted it into the program. We're currently in the design phase, and we will be funding design, construction, and construction inspection for this project. We've had the local safety program since 2005. We've provided over $98 million in funding for construction. We've provided over $25 million for design assistance. And as part of all federal-funded projects, we have to have a component for community outreach. So we're giving this presentation tonight to the city council, and then we'll be doing a public information center in the next couple of weeks, and we'll repeat this presentation again, and we'll allow the public to make comments and provide input on the project as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you, City Council, and the rest of the individuals from the city, and Ray for your time tonight. I'm Brad Miller. I'm the project manager for Michael Baker. We're the consultant that's helping the assisting the county and NJTPA and NJDOT on this project. First, Anthony Durante, our lead planner, is going to describe the project location and some of the existing conditions that we have at this site. Anthony, can you take it from here, please?
Yeah, thanks, Brad. Again, my name is Anthony Durante. I'm an associate with Michael Baker. Thank you again, as was already said, for the opportunity to present this project to you tonight. Our focus is on the five intersections that are shown on the screen over on the right. They are East Front and Leland, intersection number one; intersection number two, Leland and East 7th, moving down East 7th to Woodland Avenue, then to Berkman Avenue, and lastly to Arlington Avenue. Ultimately, as a safety project, that's our focus on improving design and infrastructure at these locations. But before we get into exactly what we're doing, it's helpful to kind of understand some of the safety issues, and in this case, crashes. And that's what's shown on the bottom left on the screen right now. The highest number of crashes that we see at the five intersections are at Leland and East 7th. This is not entirely surprising, given the busyness of this intersection. Leland, of course, providing access underneath the Rabbit Valley Line. Not, as you know, not all north-south roads do that, and it also provides access up to Route 22. And then, East 7th, of course, operating kind of as a supplement to South Avenue and carrying vehicles throughout Union County. So a busy intersection, that's where we see our most crashes. Some other things, kind of at a higher level, not necessarily location-based, but we're not seeing any fatalities and crash stuff that we've been working with. There are three pedestrian crashes, which is something we always like to pay attention to and need to pay attention to. And really, most of the vehicular crashes that we're seeing, nearly a third of rear-end crashes, which are fairly common but not terribly serious usually, and the second-most, nearly a quarter, are right-angle crashes. So that kind of just paints the picture of crashes and safety. Next slide. And some of this, some of the crashes, some of the safety issues are contributing factor is some of the existing conditions that we see. This isn't necessarily the cause of all crashes, but is certainly a contributing, some of these things could contribute to some of the safety issues that we do see. What we do see out in the field right now at these locations are outdated signal poles and the mast arms. In certain cases, like the image in the center of the screen right now, they are tilting to one side, leaning to one side. The signal technology is what's called pre-time signals, so the actual timings of the red lights and the green lights, if you will, is pre-time. So there's a number of seconds that go into the red phases or the green phases, for example. And those really don't have an ability to change based on conditions or traffic. For pedestrians, many of the intersections miss or are missing. The signal heads, which are basically the walk-don't-walk signals that you're familiar with, or the push buttons that allow that signal to come up for pedestrians to cross safely. Some of the curb ramps don't meet ADA compliance, so that's always a real consideration. And like we see on the bottom-left image, many of the crosswalks are, the paint is, in fact, faded, which can make it hard to see in inclement weather or at night. So that kind of just sets up what we're dealing with currently, and I'll pass it over to Brad now to focus on what we're proposing.
Sure, thanks, Anthony. So the proposed improvements at these five intersections, as Anthony had discussed, it's a pedestrian safety improvement project, so the goal of this is to increase safety. So we're going to be upgrading all of the traffic signals at these five intersections with new traffic signal poles, mast arms, foundations, new 12-inch signal heads, LED indicators, retro-reflective backplates. All of these will be the powder-coated black Union County standard that many of you are probably familiar with, as you've seen around the county, on the county roadways. Vehicle image detection will also be installed to make the signals actuated. That's going to replace the old inductant loops that are in the roadways. So this is from a maintenance perspective and an accuracy perspective, it's a much better solution. Brand-new traffic signal controller cabinets. As Anthony had mentioned, there will be countdown pedestrian signal heads, as well as push buttons, detectable warning surfaces. Those are the truncated domes that you're probably familiar with, that you've seen in ADA curb ramps. We'll also be re-striping the intersections with high-visibility crosswalks, as well as other pavement striping, and upgrading and updating the regulatory and warning signage, as well as static signs for pedestrians. And some of the select intersections will be upgrading the lighting at those locations as well. And then finally, milling and paving of the roadway surfaces within all of the areas of disturbance, so that way we're not going to just come in and trench a conduit and leave a bump in the roadway. The entire intersections will be brand-new pavement within those areas. So quickly, I'll just go through these five intersections to just show what the improvements that are planned are. You can see on this graphic here, it shows the limits of the pavement. The new sidewalks will be eliminating existing tripping hazards within those sidewalks and also installing the new traffic signal infrastructure. At the first intersection, East Front Street and Leland, it's a pretty standard improvement. We're replacing everything pretty much in kind from a lane configuration perspective. So there's nothing that can be too controversial, or, you know, I believe at this particular intersection. At the end of this, if there's any questions from anybody on here, you can let us know, and we'll be able to answer them for you. I'm going to move on now to the second intersection. That's East 7th Street and Leland. At this particular location, we're making some improvements that are, you know, some more advanced improvements at this particular location. We'll be re-striping the northbound and southbound East 7th Street to provide exclusive left-turn lanes. These are left-turn bays. This is going to require establishing no parking zones within the area of the new turn lanes. Currently, parking is not permitted for the southbound approach in the vicinity of the school that's there. And then the northbound approach is a travel lane, so parking isn't permitted there either. So it's just in the receiving lanes that parking will have to be prohibited. The intention is that the left-turn movements here will be permissive lefts. So basically, what that means is it's a left turn on a green ball. It's not a dedicated turn arrow, based on the traffic analysis that we've done from analyzing the traffic counts that were performed in February. So all the traffic counts were done pre-pandemic, so they are based on actual traffic. The permissive lefts are the most efficient signal operation here. As we previously said, all the other similar improvements will be performed, undertaken at this location. Moving on to, so this, just what I was just explaining, the sinker analysis, which determines if the turn bays were necessary based on the traffic volumes. The turn bays, the length of them are also determined based on what's called the 85th percentile, for the peak hour, which is the 15-minute period that had the largest queue of traffic. So that's how the turn bays' lengths were determined. All in all, 11 existing on-street parking spaces will need to be prohibited to facilitate the turn bays at this location. The third intersection we have here is East 7th Street and Woodland. This location, we are re-striping in kind. There's no additional changes to the striping or the geometrics at this location, replacing sidewalks in identified areas, as well as milling and paving. We will need to, I'm sorry, I misspoke on that. We will need to establish no parking zones as well at this location, based on the addition of turn, left turn bays here. At this particular location, it will result in 16 parking spaces that are eliminated to facilitate those permissive left turns. The fourth intersection we have here is East 7th Street and Berkman. The existing left turns here, they'll be permissive lefts as well. We'll be installing 12-inch signal heads and backplates and image detection, just as we are at the other locations, and performing similar improvements. We're also identifying that an additional lighting standard, you know, lighting pole with luminaire, is necessary at this location to have appropriate lighting for both pedestrians crossing the street and vehicles. There's no parking elimination proposed at this location. And then finally, we have East 7th and Arlington. This is the only location where we anticipate any sort of a right-of-way impact. On the northwest corner, the existing sidewalk appears to impact out of the right-of-way. The sidewalk basically extends to the storefront that's on that corner. So we'll have to, you know, in coordination with Ray and the county, reach out to the property owner to receive permission to do construction improvements outside of the right-of-way. Similar improvements, as the other locations are planned for this location as well. So Christine was explaining the next steps when she was explaining NJTPA's role in this. Christine, do you want to take it from here as regards to the upcoming steps?
Sure. So we're going to have a public information center in the next two, three weeks. We'll complete preliminary design this December. Then we have to submit a document to DOT for environmental approval. It's part of every federal project. That takes some time. We're thinking it'll take about four months. Oh, I have, I'm sorry, a year and four months, no, four months, April 2021. And then the consultant will probably take till about December 2021 to complete the plans, specs, and estimates, and those are the documents that we'll use to request federal authorization for construction. And we hope that the county will be able to begin construction in March of 2023, and the project should take about six months to complete.
And mayor and council and staff, that concludes our presentation this evening. We wanted to respect the 20-minute time allotment, and we do appreciate that, but we are available for questions and answers if anyone had a question regarding our infrastructure improvement.
Mr. President, may I ask one question, please?
You may, Mayor.
So Ray and team, can there be any consideration given to 3D sidewalks, which would elevate the pedestrian, making the pedestrian more visible to motor vehicle traffic?
Brad, can you comment on that?
Not sidewalk, but I meant crosswalks.
Sure, I'm sorry. Did you say raised crosswalks? Is that what you said?
Yeah, which I use the term 3D crosswalks.
Are you talking about the kind where the has a treatment in which it almost looks like a three-dimensional image? Or are you talking about where it's actually a raised pavement, like a 3-inch?
No, I am talking about where it looks, you know, it's a 3D image, and then the pedestrian is crossing. The pedestrian appears to the motorist to be elevated, providing more visibility to the motorist of the pedestrian in the crosswalk.
Yeah, I guess Christine, I guess we'd have to look into if that's FHWA, because this is a federally funded project, if that's an experimental treatment that's permitted for federal funds?
It is an experimental treatment. It's not permitted in federal funds. It came up on another project where we were looking at doing raised crosswalks. I mean, we can check it again, but it's not something that Federal Highway would permit in their projects.
So we will investigate that to find out how, with federal funds, something like that could be progressed. Ray, do you have any experience with any other county jurisdiction locations that have that sort of a treatment?
I have not, but I will check with Paul Lesso and Tom Minio, the county engineer, to see if this treatment was applied. I know there are some streetscape plans in the works in the city of New Providence, and I'm just going to circle back with Paul tomorrow to see if New Providence has applied that, because I have heard of that concept, and I'm thinking of it as well. So those are two areas, you know, on the north side of Route 22 that we can certainly inquire and learn a little bit more about. We'd be happy to do so.
Ray, you also, Westfield comes to mind, too. Now, I can't speak to whether or not it's a county road, but there are, I want to say central along in Westfield. I'm picturing raised crosswalks there, and I'm not.
Anthony, what we're talking about more, it's more like an optical illusion, I believe, is what the mayor's talking about.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to discuss that with Tom and Paul tomorrow in the office.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. All right.
Are there any questions from council members? I can't see your faces, so.
I do. This is Sean.
Go right ahead, Councilman McKenna.
Okay. First of all, a great presentation, and thank you for the details there. So happens, the majority of these are in my ward, and they have been constant areas of concern, especially Berkman and 7th and Leland. So just a couple of quick questions. Leland is a city road that crosses 7th, which is a county road. And one of the issues with Leland, and maybe you coordinate with the city on this, is that Leland has one lane in either direction, but they're treated as if they're two. And the same issue that you're talking about putting in, I forget how you call it, the permissive left turn, you know, how there is no permissive left, it's treated as such, you know, on its own, as a single lane, and one of the reasons accidents occurs is if you're turning south onto Leland and somebody is going east, and they want to go around somebody who's turning left, suddenly they come darting around, and you end up hitting. And it's one of those kind of cringe moments when you're turning, because I live right here there, where you just hope, you know, you're looking for tires and headlights just to see if anybody's coming around. But you're going to have the same issue on Leland. Going southbound on Leland, crossing 7th, people will want to turn left onto 7th, and people will go around them on the right side of them to either go right or go across Leland. So there may need to be some conversation there, just so we don't eliminate it by half and then have this issue rise again that becomes a city issue. And then the other thing on 7th and Berkman, I don't recall how many, did you say you're eliminating parking spots?
Not at 7th and Berkman, no, there's no parking elimination proposed at those locations.
Are there line-of-sight issues there with parking too close to the intersections? Is that a concern?
So when we were talking about eliminating parking, we were talking about eliminating legal parking, parking within 25 feet of the intersection. We will be proposing additional signage to prohibit that. I'm not sure if it's a municipal ordinance right now that is prohibiting that, but we will, yeah, we will be making sure there's no parking within the site triangle that's not currently a legal parking space.
Okay, thank you. And then one last comment, and I don't know if this falls under this funding, but an issue, especially for Netherwood neighbors, which would be crossing 7th on Belvedere, is that's pretty much like taking your life in your hands crossing there, and people cross a lot to go to and from the train station. And we've had pedestrian crossing signs that are in the middle of the street that end up, you know, twice, well, I haven't seen them actually in a while, but in the last six months, I've gotten on my car and stood them back up because they get hit. So is there anything within this funding that would allow for that flashing crosswalk setup that I know they have in Westfield, on the north avenue side, right? Yeah, I think they might have it on both, but I've seen it on the north avenue side.
Ray, how far is Belvedere from this location?
I think Belvedere is in between.
The next intersection left.
Leland, is it Leland and Woodland? Is it?
It's between, exactly. It's the next.
And I think at one, I do recall several years ago, a discussion on that. There is some type of box on 7th Street near the Belvedere intersection that at one time there may have been some device there. Christine, is there room within the budget on this project to consider that box style, which I believe council is leading towards?
Is that where they hit the button and it flashes the runway lights underneath?
We're talking about one intersection away from one of the intersections in our project, correct?
It's within the corridor, but.
It's difficult with these projects, once we've accepted them into the program, we don't have the flexibility to add additional intersections, because we go through a fairly tedious process of bringing the consultant onboard for design. And once that scope of work, which identifies the intersection that they're going to work on, is established, we can't make modifications to it, and I can't add it to the project at this point. It's something that it would have to have been part of the application process early on.
Did you all happen to study that intersection? Because I personally, and I don't wander around, you know, that often in that intersection, I personally witnessed two accidents in probably the last eight months there. It's a very dangerous intersection, not only through with vehicles, but also with pedestrians crossing. And there is a crosswalk there now. Oh, did you catch that? Yeah, if you reverse, yeah, there is the crosswalk, but it's just not enough visibility from those both directions, that everybody's moving way too fast.
I can say this, I'll say this to Ray, but I'll say this in front of everyone, that we do have these solicitations where we take in projects, and our next one will be released in September of next year. But we do have a consultant that we are bringing onboard, the NJTPA, sometime around January, to help the counties with selecting their locations that they're going to submit for the application. So if the county wants to pursue this, you know, intersection to investigate whether a hawk signal is warranted, or even a full-blown traffic signal if it meets the counts, we can certainly work with the county. We can look at the crash data, and we can look at what's appropriate. But ultimately, what the county submits as the application, we leave that up to them. But Ray's been very good about working on, you know, city of Plainfield projects in the last couple of years. So Ray, we can work with you on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Christine, and I'll make a note of that for part two of my discussion with Tom and Paul. If there's any safety improvement that can be incorporated into that sensitive intersection, we'll certainly look into it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Whoever's doing the steering there and doing the maps, that was well done.
Okay.
Awesome. Do we have any other questions from council members? All right, hearing none. I'd like to thank you for your participation and your presentation. It was well done.
Thank you for your time.
And, you know, we appreciate these much-needed upgrades to these locations.
Mayor, council, directors, and staff, thank you very much for your cooperation with this. I know we put this meeting tonight together rather quickly, and we do appreciate the support that we've received from the city. We look forward to working again with you, and the pick meeting will be coming up for public interest later this month, and we thank you very much for your time this evening.
And we thank and appreciate you as well.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, folks. Thank you very much.
You do the same. You take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move to consideration of public hearings, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 202018 by title and certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 202018 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 803 South Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified on the city's tax map as Block 645, Lot 12, and identified in the city's tax records as 757 through 819 South Avenue. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on August 19th, 2020.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this specific ordinance. If you'd like to speak, please go to the hand icon, raise your hand, and you will be permitted to speak on this ordinance. Okay, Jim Plummer, you have been added, and unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak on this ordinance.
I'm not too sure. I may have raised my hand too soon. The ordinance you're talking about is regarding the traffic signals?
No, no, it's not.
Am I able to talk about the dare management now?
Not yet. We will have a generic public comment, and we'll get to that, and you can just raise your hand again. We'll call on you again.
Okay, just being an old person, I make mistakes.
We all do.
Thank you.
All right. All right, is there anyone else who raised their hand on this ordinance? And if not, let me have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's unanimous. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, it shall be published as required by law.
So... Second, Council President.
Okay. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
Craig?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom? Councilman Mills-Ransom, I think you're on mute.
Yes, sorry, I didn't come off. Vote is yes.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, want to oppose this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, thank you. We now move to the public comments, limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes have been allocated for public comments, limited to the same. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized. You'll be unmuted and given the opportunity to speak. Please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
Yes, Marie and Sarah, Watchung Avenue, Plainfield, regarding the proposed deer kill. First of all, I was given the wrong number by the clerk's office today. I was only able to call in on the phone. They gave me a number. It turned out to be a fax number. I gave that number to quite a few people. So please verify with the clerk to give the correct number out for these meetings. Secondly, the spin on the robo-call makes me think this is a done deal, knee-jerk reversal to what we all agreed on in September of 2019. I don't know where this is coming from. Even the complainers do not want a killing. We agreed that we would resolve or mitigate certain issues as they came up. 2020 was a difficult year, as most of you are well aware. Several programs we had scheduled needed to be canceled. I don't know where this kill is coming from. I do know it's based on total inaccurate data that complaints will not be resolved. It will only give false security and not only continue to develop more mistrust and anger between residents and administration. And finally, going back to 2020, it's been a tough year. People are not happy. There is depression. There is isolation. There is violence. We don't need more violence in Plainfield. We need good news. We need to reach out to our fellow residents and resolve things and be grateful for what we've got. This deal, if it goes through, and I truly hope, Mayor Mapp, that you are not reversing the wonderful thing you put through in September. If this goes through, it is going to cause a great deal of damage among residents. So I end with, where is this coming from? Is it political or is it personal? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who will raise their hand? Okay, here's Jim Plummer. Unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak, Mr. Plummer.
Okay, good. James Plummer, 689 West 8th Street. It's incredulous that some might weigh the health and safety of our grandchildren and children as secondary to the freedom of animals that are forced out of their natural habitat and now living between homes in our Plainfield neighborhoods. Nevertheless, the choice is not even close, as the health and safety of our families trumps without question the unfortunate overpopulation of deer in our town. I have been living on West 8th Street on the Hubbard block for 42 years. No wooded areas near my block or street. For 38 of those years, I have never seen a deer in my yard. Maybe four years ago, it was startling to see a lone deer on the Hubbard school on at night. Yet now, I see herds of six to 10 deer roaming in our home yards at all times of the day, all year. People walk in the neighborhood, and passing cars often stop and point as they are openly surprised seeing the deer. Seeing the deer is not the primary problem. It's their presence. Thirty years ago, my children and neighborhood kids played baseball and football in our yards, and sometimes we even put a blanket out to play with toddlers on nice days. Today, small amounts of black balls, the fecal waste of deer, litter both my front and backyard as well as my neighbors. There's no way my grandchildren can play in my yard without the fear of falling on deer poop or having toddlers inadvertently touching deer droppings. Deer solids and liquid waste are there time after time, along with the increase of ticks and fleas. As unhealthy as that is, an equally disturbing problem is the unknown reaction of the deer. In the past, you could yell at the deer or walk towards them to make them flee. The deer of 2020 are bull deer. They don't fear humans. We have gone as far as banging pans together and loudly slapping shovels, which just result in the deer just backing away and reluctantly leaving. My neighbor even witnessed a fawn being born in the bushes behind her house. Who knows how the mother deer would react if someone, especially kids, would approach her fawn? We all know that deer don't belong in this environment. I find it repugnant that some people believe we should live like this. Proudly across Watchung Avenue is the newly painted Black Lives Matter. Certainly, that includes the lives of all children of Plainfield. I find it offensive that some people believe our children should accept a stunted outdoor life to protect the overpopulation of deer in Plainfield. What type of people would think that deer are more important than children? I don't have a summer home, a beach home, or any other leisure property. I have my yard, and I should be able to use it for my family. As a legislative body, you have a clear responsibility to keep our neighborhoods healthy and safe. I really don't know the option available to you to reduce the population of deer, but urge you to immediately explore, confer, and act on a plan to alleviate the scourge of our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Council President, a quick comment, just to mention that individuals who called in that want to comment apparently can hit star nine to raise their hands.
Ms. Thorpe, unmute yourself. You can be heard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Thorpe, 845 Field Avenue. The previous resident spoke exactly how I felt. I don't need to add anything to it other than, when will this take place? Just like the previous, Mr. Plummer, my grandchildren play on the driveway as opposed to in the yard, front and backyard, because of the deer. So I agree with everything he said. I like to know when this action of eliminate the deer out of Plainfield would take place. Get the deer out of Plainfield, that's what I said.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Okay. Mr. Git, please state your name and address for the record.
I have Chetwind Avenue. Just wanted to say...
Your volume's a little low. If you could speak up, please.
Okay. I've been a resident for almost 20 years. For 15 years, you know, we had little nibbles here and there, and that's fine. You're living with, you know, other animals, great. But the last five years has just been like completely out of control over here on Chetwind Avenue. We had five deer last year strictly just on the street, then eight this year, which means we're looking at like 11 next year. So like, when's that gonna end? And I've had deer in my garage when the car was parked in there and got it out carefully. I've seen people who were walking down the street at certain times of the year, mating season, being chased, and they're screaming, running into their houses or getting behind cars. I've seen that twice. It's sort of funny, but really not. I've had to wrap the street trees that the city has put in, and we've paid for as taxpayers, with wrap, because the deer will rub their antlers off them, and they've done some real damage on some of the new little trees we have, which we really want to keep going here. You know, I moved to the suburbs to have a garden, and boy, you know, it's fine. Like I said, a little nibbles, but in the last five years, much that's been outside of the fence has either been killed by the deer or just gone. And you can't, you're just not gonna replace that. You know, I go to other towns to take walks so I can see what the landscaping looks like there, there, just because I'm interested in that. And I can't see that here because everybody's got nothing, or they've got cages around things. We also have a neighbor who feeds the deer. And I know that's not against the law. I checked into that. But it really is not helpful, because it's causing a rat problem, and people on Chetwind have had to have exterminators come to deal with the rats. It also, you know, increases the population. They maybe think they're doing something good for the animals, but it only adds to the population and the problem. Also, it puts the deer on a time schedule. So we have a pack now that comes through and forages on everybody's yards, heads over to that house, gets fed, and then leaves, takes a nap, and comes out in the afternoon. So, and when you have debris in the street from yard waste pickup, there are deer around those piles. And at night, if you, you can be going five miles an hour, and you'll see a deer jump out from behind a pile. It's just not, it's just not really great. So, you know, I don't know about a call. I think I'm 100% for it. But maybe there's a different way to deal with the population with some kind of sterilization darts or in the feed. That's just like a thought, but I really appreciate something being done because it's really gotten out of control, like I said, the last five years. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Git. So who do we have next for a public comment?
Christine is using an older version, so I have to promote her as a panelist in order to allow her to talk.
Okay, I'm sure that's temporary, so that's fine.
Yep. Christine, you're now over. You should just have to unmute yourself to speak.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Not a problem. State your name and address.
Thank you very much. I'm Christine E. Muller. I live on 1319 Chetwind Avenue. We moved here two years ago from Scotch Plains. I had a very large, you know, house, a large house with a big yard on the north side of Scotch Plains. And every once in a while, you'd have a deer walk by through our woods. We had some woods. And that was all good. We had fox. We had groundhogs. It was great. And then we moved here to Plainfield two years ago. And I had very mature landscaping, beautiful landscaping that was here from previous owners. Twenty-foot-tall arborvitae that have been here for 20 years. And within the past two years, they've, the deer have eaten them all they five feet high. Arborvitae is not a food for deer. I mean, the deer are starving. They're eating things that they normally shouldn't be eating. The last two seasons, mating seasons, I've had deer born in my backyard. You know, and then those deer, they've, you know, this has become their home. This is where they infest. So the last two years now, I've had five deer walk through my backyard. They come through at five o'clock. They're here. They sleep on my side yard all overnight. And they've, you know, they're really becoming very bold. You know, it can be a problem. So I mirror all of the comments and concerns you're hearing. Something has to happen. You know, they're being hit on hills every season. And when we throw out all the grass clippings and the tree clippings, they're eating from them there. And as I said, we're cleaning up after them. So I'm just adding my support to what you've already heard, that education, we all have plenty of education about not to do for deer, and we all have the deer signs, and we all know what to plant, but they're eating everything anyway. And now I think we need to have, you know, have some sort of deer reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer. Who do we have next?
All right, this one is a phone number, so I'm not exactly sure. There you go. Can you unmute yourself?
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm not sure if I'm on.
We hear you. Yes, we hear you. Hi.
Hi, Gloria Binkowski, Woodmere Place in Plainfield. I just want to make one comment in the very beginning. I'm not aware of any danger that deer pose to human health in this environment here. I'd be happy to look at any evidence that can be presented. I'm sure all of us would. Let me just say, for the last 25 years or so, deer management in Union County is synonymous with deer killing. It hasn't worked to reduce deer numbers. In fact, it has done just the opposite. And what it also does is provide deer hunting opportunities for hunters. Union County government deer policies are heavily influenced by hunters. Many Union County employees are hunters. Up until recently, and maybe even now, a hunting club has had its meetings in the county building on South Avenue in Scotch Plains. Yes, it's true that there are more, there are a lot of deer in Plainfield, and deer populations in suburban and urban areas are a result of loss of wild habitats. Where there were once forests or open space, now there are malls, office parks, or McMansion housing developments with plantings that actually attract deer. Consider the construction of Watchung Square and the development of huge houses at the eastern end of Cushing Road and Short Hills Drive off Woodland Avenue. Dust seemed up for this deer kill once again, in spite of what the previous speakers have said. The emphasis for the deer kill resolution is about deer eating residential plantings. I would also like to say again that human activities have caused deer populations to be what they are. So in a way, it's beholden to humans to accept their presence and adapt to their presence. Please don't support the resolution. It really won't fix anything, but sadly, it will bring violent people and violence into Plainfield. I don't think any of the speakers want that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And we have more. Ms. Scott, can I mute yourself? State your name and address for the record.
Kathleen Scott, 615 West 8th Street in Plainfield. And I would like to speak in favor of the resolution, following my neighbors, Jim Plummer and others. I've also watched the deer... resolution, following my neighbors, Jim Plummer and others. I've also watched the deer population increase and the damage. I agree that humans have changed the environment and made it more attractive to deer, but that means we are responsible for dealing with the problem. And I would urge the council members to take some steps to reduce the deer population. I personally am very concerned about the possibility of the spread of tick-borne diseases. Although I haven't been infected, I have a dog who tested positive for a tick-borne disease, and he doesn't leave Plainfield. So I'm very concerned that he picked something up here. Deer are well-known to carry tick-borne diseases, and that's a great concern, I think, for all of our health. Ticks are a huge problem, and deer are a very large part of that. And I would urge you to take steps to lower the population. And I thank you for having this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, Hughes, last name Hughes, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, it's Peter Hughes. I'm at 1309 Denmark Road in Plainfield. And I echo the sentiments of everyone who's in favor of this deer call. Actually, I think a deer call should be expanded. We can't just have it over on Cushing Ave. It's got to be brought in, unfortunately, I think, to the parks and near the pond by Leland Avenue. As a resident of Denmark Road, you guys are worried about deer-borne tick diseases. Well, my wife contacted Lyme disease three or four years ago here. And we're very careful now in the yard. I, we enjoy doing a lot of yard work. We've had to spend thousands to fence in our yard now, which we never had to do, and as have other residents on Denmark Road. If everybody wants to keep the deer here, then I guess they like ugly landscapes. And, and that's just very unfortunate. But I'm in favor of deer call. I don't think it brings violent people into our neighborhoods. They're hunters. And, you know, they're, they're doing a positive thing for the deer population. You know, I don't know what else to add, but it's a serious problem we have here in Plainfield, and it's a costly problem to the residents of Plainfield. And if you want to try to beautify Plainfield, well, first you have to get rid of the deer. That's basically all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for your comments. Okay, Holmes, Gloria Holmes, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Gloria Holmes, 686 West 8th Street. And I do live on the Hubbard block. I am a senior, so I am, am at, more at risk for COVID. One of the delights I used to have was my property, was my garden, was my backyard. I now can't use that. I actually have a herd that comes through because my property is on their path. And I'm talking about not only does and fawns, but also the males with the large antlers. I've actually had a fawn who was birthed on my property. That fawn was one of three. So it seems like they must be pretty healthy if they're having three babies at one time. It's one thing to have a deer population. It's another to feel as though in that the deer are overrunning you. And I'm not only feeling that, my property shows that. I can't have a vegetable garden. I can't have a flower garden. I can't have my grandkids over. It's really ridiculous at that, at this point. I really appreciate if something could be done about it. Thank you.
Ms. Jean-Pierre, you can now be heard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kay Jean-Pierre. I'm at 544 West 8th Street in Plainfield. And I'm in favor as well. In fact, I really appreciate the sentiments of Mr. Plummer. I'm also a 20-plus year resident, and I have seen the deer population increase, particularly in the last two to three years tremendously. My husband and I are both very hard workers, and we come home in the evening, and we see deer lounging in our backyard. It's like they get to appreciate our yard more than we do. We do have fruit trees that we've had to cage to prevent them from attacking them and trying to eat fruit. I've seen many fawn birthed in my property as well. We even had one that was, I don't know if this is the correct term, but they were, it was an albino deer, and it caused a spectacle. Every time cars would drive down the street and they would see it, they'd stop. And just to add to the previous presentation, there's numerous accidents here on West 8th and Plainfield Avenue. We just had two in the past week. And I'm fearful that the deer will be part of this problem. There's an empty lot behind me. It's actually on West 7th Street, and that is a home to at least 15 deer. And every time it's a storm, they all come out. They actually go through our yard, cross a street, into the home across the street from us. So it's really a big problem. I don't, I don't like killing either. I feel for the other neighbors, but it is not safe. I'm worried about Lyme disease as well. And the deer waste is everywhere. So I'd appreciate it if something could be done.
Thank you, Ms. Jean-Pierre. Last name Biddle. Please unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Good evening. Reina Biddle, 916 Carnegie Avenue. I have been a resident here for 19 years. I agree that something needs to be done with the deer population. I have an elementary-aged child that has now been homeschooled since March, where her only recourse is inside our house because I am fearful to let her go outside because of deer ticks. We have an issue where my house is one of only a few houses on the block that is not fenced in. And the reason why I chose not to fence in my yard is because I have an elderly neighbor that I look after to the right of me, where I feel like I don't want to box in my property where I can't look over her property and my property. This has caused the deers to jump over her fence, which is a four-foot fence that she has with her neighbor, and reside in my yard because my neighbor has a six-foot fence. So they feel like they have good backing towards my neighbor's fence to reside. I have a family of five deer, a mother deer, it appears to be her two bucks that she had a number of years, years ago, and now two baby fawns that she had last year. It's just becoming unbearable because, again, we can't use our outside space. Again, the droppings are a problem, and it's just unsanitary. So, you know, I really call for you to, you know, think about our, our elementary school children and people's grandkids who can't even, you know, use the space that we have outside. So thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Robbins. Unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Okay, I'm not sure where Ms. Robbins went. Perhaps we should, we will. Oh, she unmuted. No. All right.
I'm here. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Robbins. I live with my family at 862 Leland Ave. We are directly across the street from the Cook School Park. We have been residents of Plainfield for almost nine years. And I'm also a science teacher and teach environmental science and a little bit of ecology and evolution. The deer problem in Union County and in New Jersey is a heartbreaking one. All the research says, and this is a really important number, that there should be one whitetail deer per eight to 15 acres. Want that to sink in for a moment. One deer per eight to 15 acres. Across the street, we have counted up to 18 head of deer at an individual time. And at this point, it is actually inhumane for the deer to have so many of these beautiful animals in such tight proximity. The animals are starving. They're not healthy. And as a population, they are more vulnerable to disease and also to spread disease. Although deer are an absolutely beautiful animal to look at, they're a prey species. They're an herbivore, and they need apex predators to keep them in check. Plainfield has actually a bunch of options. A lot of people are opposing the hunt, and that's okay. We could use other ways for deer control, like reintroducing wolves or mountain lions, but I think that that would cause a lot more chaos in our fine city. But there does need to be something to keep it in check. The deer have wiped out all the undergrowth, and our forests, our forested areas are no longer healthy as a result of it. One of the previous residents said that she was not aware of what deer can spread, and I was actually on a separate window Googling all the different things that deer can be vectors for. I would argue that one of the current scariest is Lyme disease, which is absolutely devastating for those people who get it. I have a nephew who acquired it in upstate New York, and he has said on more than one occasion that he mourns the years of his life that he lost to it. The other concern I have is there's something called chronic wasting disease that is moving progressively north, and it's devastating to the deer population. We haven't seen any evidence of it jumping from deer to humans, but if we see it break out into our population, instead of having some deer, we're going to end up having none deer. I fully support the council doing something about the deer population. I think that having a controlled hunt and a culling of the deer, although heartbreaking, is much safer than introducing apex predators. But something needs to be done because otherwise, what we're going to see is the deer population are going to increase. They're going to explode to a point that they wipe out all the vegetation, and then there's going to be famine, and it's going to be really bad. Thank you very much for your time, and I understand that this is a very hard decision on your parts, but sometimes the hard decisions are the right ones. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chester, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. Chet Prizbilko, 1317 East 7th Street, Plainfield, directly across from Coolidge Avenue between the Leland and Turrell. The deer population is just growing astronomically. I used to have an all ivy front lawn. I had to pull out the roots and the twigs because all the ivy has been eaten in the past two years. I've lost almost every evergreen bush in my backyard, also because of the deer. It's not only a problem with your, your landscaping. I've lost a couple trees because the deers rub against the barks and kill the bark, but it's also becoming a real health hazard, as other people had said, with deer tick and Lyme disease. So it really is imperative that the council do something. And it may sound drastic, but if we don't do some kind of drastic actions now, it's only going to get worse. In closing, I see three to four deer in my yard and the next-door neighbor's yards a day. And every, like, three or four days, I see a herd of anywhere from eight to 10, and sometimes 12, fawns, deers, and bucks. So please, in retrospect of everything, please do something to really curb the deer population. I've been a resident here for 44 years, and I've never seen anything like it. Thank you for your time. Good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll just take the last couple ones that have signed up. Anyone else? We've exceeded greatly our 30 minutes allotted, but, you know, because I know it's a hot issue, I did not want to stop debate or public comment on this prematurely before everyone's heard. But so, we have one additional, two additional people, the one that's going to go next, and someone else. And we won't accept anyone else raising their hand at this point. Mr. Bart, please state your name and address for the record.
This is Bart Brown, 1299 Denmark Road in Plainfield. I've been here for 30 years. The first 15 years, not a single deer. The last 15 years, every year, more deer than the year before. I agree with everything everybody has said about initiating a call. Even more than a call, I'd vote to completely eradicate all deer from Plainfield. But I will comment on the one thing nobody else has commented on, and that is, in the last two years, I have hit two deer in the lazy neighborhood roads with a neighbor banging on a pot or a pan to scare the deer out of their yard. They just jump in the road in front of the traveling cars. Luckily, I've not been hurt, but it's only a matter of time till somebody either dies or runs their car into a tree, or runs their car into a pedestrian on the sidewalk trying to get away from the deer that are jumping in front of the cars. And that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Mrs. Hoyle. Unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Ms. Hoyle. All right. I don't, I think maybe perhaps Ms. Hoyle's having technical difficulties. Perhaps you can chime in at the end of the meeting during regular public comment once you resolve the audio issues, because we can't hear you, Ms. Hoyle. Sorry. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment on resolutions, motions, and ordinances considered this evening.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition abstentions. Public comment is now closed.
Mr. President.
Yes.
With your permission, if you can give me two minutes to speak on that matter.
Go right ahead, Mayor.
We all know that the deer problem is out of hand and out of control. And oftentimes, we hear the voices of three to five animal rights activists who always seek to elevate the rights of the animals above that of our residents and property owners. And I felt it necessary to provide residents who call my office, who speak to me personally and to other council members pleading to us to do something about the deer problem. So yes, I had the robocall go out to our residents so that their voices can be heard. I want to thank all of you who took the time to call in and to Mr. Hughes. I agree with you that the area of the call should be expanded. And so to that end, I will have conversations with the county with a goal towards expanding the area of the call. So again, I want to thank you and all of the other residents who took the time to call in and weigh in on this very important subject. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Mayor. Okay, are there any comments on councils on resolutions 249, 20 through 253, 20? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Okay. Any, any opposition? Abstentions? Okay. Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved. Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you please proceed with reading of the resolutions?
Uh, one second. Did we vote on that?
Yeah, what was that?
Legislative.
I know what resolutions were on, but did we actually vote, or did we just call the motion in the second, and then we just went to the next thing?
I thought I said all in favor, but we can.
I must have missed it.
Okay. We can do a roll call if you prefer, and then take our time with it.
For each one? I don't know if we need to do that, do we?
No, we don't.
We were all in favor, Council President.
All in favor, but, you know, we do a roll call for all of them.
Well, I think what Ms. Davis is saying is that, I didn't hear it either. I just heard a motion and against, and that was it. I never heard anything else in between, so.
Okay. Let's just back up then. May I have a motion to approve council resolutions two forty-nine twenty through two fifty-three twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All right. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on resolutions two forty-nine twenty through two fifty-three twenty, moved by Councilman Good, seconded by Councilwoman Mills Ransom, Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Mr. President Armani.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Dennis, those resolutions have been approved.
Thank you. Okay, Clerk, please read Resolution R. two fifty dash one. No, I'm sorry, that's not, we passed that.
Uh, Resolution two fifty-four dash twenty granting advice and consent to the appointment of Abby Levinson as business administrator for the city.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Is it the pleasure of the administration to have BA Levinson continue to serve in the capacity as Personnel Director as well as Business Administrator?
The answer is yes.
Is there a cost savings to the city, and do we know how much that cost savings would be by having her participate, by having her serve in dual roles?
The cost savings will be significant. We will have one person performing the role of two, and although we would rather have those positions remain separate as they have been, given the capability of Mrs. Levinson and her municipal experience and how she has adapted into this role, I felt it necessary to move forward with her appointment at this time. And yes, there will be savings, because we are paying less than what we would normally be paying for two individuals, as well as the savings on benefits and other things that would normally go along with the position of Business Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Good. Councilwoman Davis?
I was not. I had a follow-up.
I apologize, Councilwoman Davis. I thought you.
So, Mr. West, if we can get what that cost savings number is, I would greatly appreciate it. I do realize that there will be a significant savings, as the mayor stated, but if we can get exactly what that number is, it doesn't have to be tonight if you don't have it, but if you could send that over to us, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And I will tell you that, you know, when you annualize that, at a minimum, it's a hundred thousand dollars. But I can tell you that, given the fact that someone else was in the position for part of this year, it's not that kind of savings this year.
Okay.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just would like to know, just, and I'm pretty sure members of the public would like to know as well, how long will she occupy both those positions? Down the road, is there plans to separate them?
The answer is that we have a great deal of confidence in Mrs. Levinson. She has blended well with the team, and she has the support of the full team, and we have no plans to separate the positions at this time. The plan is for administrative staff to continue to provide her with the support as they have been over the last month or so, and that we have every faith and confidence that she will be successful. Might there be a need down the road for a lower level position in her personnel office? That's possible, but we don't see that at present. As a matter of fact, I had a discussion with Mrs. Levinson only today about that very question, and we believe that that's not necessary at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. All the best to you, Ms. Levinson.
Thank you. May I just add one point?
You may. You may. Yes, go right ahead.
Oh, okay. So I just want to just add the point that the HR director role, the Personnel Director role, and the BA role have much overlap, especially coming into 2021 where union contract negotiations will be up for discussion, which would largely fall on the Personnel Director and the BA's lap to work collaboratively on. So there are many, many projects, especially in 2021, that would be relevant in both roles. So I just want to assure you that there is a lot of overlap between the roles, and I have full confidence that it will not be a problem.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman McKenna.
So, again, this happens repeatedly. We're getting this request for consent of an appointee and no resume. Zero resume. I've never even met Ms. Levinson. So I had to look at LinkedIn and just experience, you know, for about twenty years in various HR roles, which, while there is some overlap, and it's a, you know, looked like extremely great experience, there is not a whole lot of people in that respect to managing municipal government as basically COO. And I'm a little concerned about the. Because, you know, can we get, it's always interesting that when I'm talking to. Thank you. So I think it's very interesting that we're going to do roles, because all the cabinet members report to you. You're their boss. You know, the mayor appoints them, they're dotted line to the mayor, but you are their boss by charter. They report to you. You're the one that's supposed to provide reviews of their performance. They are, they, you are their boss, period. The mayor is also their boss, but in a dotted line fashion. The BA, the City Administrator, whatever it's called anymore, is the COO of the operations in the city. I, no offense to you, Ms. Levinson, but just looking at your background from LinkedIn, because I wasn't provided with a resume, I don't think, I think you have a tremendous amount of experience for HR Director, but I don't see the experience needed to manage the city.
Mrs. Levinson, don't feel a need to respond to that. If you do, so you can, but you don't have to.
The mayor is a guest at the meeting, and I'm getting really tired that he feels he can just jump in whenever he wants. This is a council meeting. Two separate entities of government. He is a guest at the meeting, and how he should instruct Ms. Levinson to or not take my thing. He can have that conversation with her afterwards.
Okay.
Council President.
The opportunity to just chime in whenever he wants. This is our meeting, not his.
Council President.
I'm fine.
I would just like to.
This is not the place for the mayor to just jump in and counter every point.
Council President, if I may address that issue of the mayor's right to speak?
No, you may not, because you're.
I'm asking the Council President, Councilwoman McKenna. I'm asking the Council President, the Presiding Officer of the meeting, if I may answer that question.
You may.
President, if I may.
You may. You may.
The mayor, per our code, has a right to speak at the council meeting. He is not a voting member, but he has the right to speak on issues of importance. So if recognized by the Chair, the Presiding Officer, yourself, Council President, he does have the right to speak.
He was not asked for recognition.
And Council President, before I was rudely interrupted, I was about to inform the counselor from the Second Ward that the Charter, the Charter, gives me the same rights as every council member. The only thing I can't do is vote. So I would encourage the counselor from the Second Ward to read the Charter.
I would encourage the mayor to also ask to be heard, which you don't ever do. You just speak. Everybody else does.
All right. So we were just concluding. Now, I don't think Ms. Levinson had anything to say.
Well, I'll, Council President, if I may.
You may.
I'll just add that I understand what Mr. McKenna is saying, and that his, you know, his concern is one I do want to address. I have served in many leadership roles throughout my tenure, which isn't specific to HR. I understand you don't have my resume, which I will happily provide to you after this meeting. I did serve as the Director of Affirmative Action and Equal Opportunity at Columbia University, which was a role in which I oversaw that affirmative action and equal opportunity for the entire university, including Columbia Medical Center, which is actually bigger than the city of Plainfield. And what I'll say is, in terms of performance reviews, and in terms of being the quote-unquote "boss" of the department heads, I've sat in probably thousands of performance reviews over my career. Not, obviously not thousands of people have reported directly to me, and I have not been I have not been in the inner workings of thousands of jobs. And so, from a high-level leadership management perspective, I'm very comfortable performing performance evaluations on jobs that I specifically would not sit in myself. And so, I don't foresee that being a problem. It hasn't been a problem in my career as of yet, and I can't imagine that this is going to be the time where it becomes problematic. I do have a, have an understanding of what it is that each director has done, and they have graciously been training me on the high-level points of their jobs for the past, for the past month or so, so.
I appreciate that answer, and forgive me, I probably misspoke. I wasn't questioning your ability to do annual reviews. I'm sure you're very, very well qualified for it, and the affirmative action leadership role is great. With affirmative action and diversity, it's great, but it does not do anything for tax issues. It doesn't have any background for negotiating pilots. It doesn't have any background for municipal finance and overall operations like public works and public safety, which you will be heavily involved in. So I do appreciate that answer, and the offer to send me your resume, feel free. It's going to be a little too late, but I do appreciate that. And it was no personal offense to you on.
Untaken. None taken.
But thank you for the answer. I do appreciate it.
Any other questions from council members? Or the mayor?
No, thank you, Council President. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to address the matter and for me to point out the rights that I have under the chart of the city. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on Resolution two forty-five twenty. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes. Can I just say that's two fifty-four twenty, not two forty-five twenty?
Fifty-four twenty, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and my answer is yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
If in favor, want to oppose, this resolution passes. Resolution two fifty-five twenty authorizing claims resolution to authorize settlement in the matter of Michael Block versus the city of Plainfield.
Any questions from council members? If not, may we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two five six twenty authorizing settlement in the matter of Milan and Mitten and David Anthony Oretta versus the city of Plainfield.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Was that an opposition abstention?
Yes. Opposition.
Okay. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, want to oppose, resolution passes. Resolution two fifty-seven twenty authorizing approval to amend the calendar year 2020 municipal budget to insert items of revenue.
Any questions from council? Now, may we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two five eight twenty authorizing change in title tax or amount of appropriation.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This motion is approved. Resolution is approved.
Resolution two fifty-nine twenty authorizing a refund due to a state tax appeal.
Any questions from council members? Now, can we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty twenty authorizing approval to enter into a five-year contract renewal with Axon International for body worn cameras.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two sixty-one twenty authorizing approval to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to purchase fire equipment and provide rescue training.
Do we have questions from council members? Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two sixty-two twenty authorizing the implementation of a deer management program.
Any questions from council members or comments?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
We have heard extensive comments this evening, so I do not want to belabor the point. But I know last year, we talked about other deer management options. Do we know of any other deer management options that will work for our municipality?
There are no other programs out there for that, Councilwoman Davis, other than unfortunately, the bow or shotgun. That's the only thing that's out there right now. Staten Island tried to do something going back to get into that. Staten Island tried to do a non-lethal method, but nothing worked. They spent almost close to seven million dollars trying that, and nothing happened with that. So that's your question. The only thing is, unfortunately, is the arrow or shotgun.
So is there a particular reason why the arrow was the chosen method? Is it like safer for the surrounding community? Like, what's the, really the rationale about choosing that particular method?
Yes, based on the vicinity it was located, yeah, that's safer than anything, the arrow. All right, because they're shooting down, unfortunately, from a tower. And the arrows have sensors on them, so you know exactly where the arrow went, to where, everything like that, so you can trace everything.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Good?
Thank you. Director Dabney, I'm just curious, what was that other method that didn't work for the seven million dollar that you spoke of?
They tried to find like a. They tried to find like a, a non-lethal method, you know, without the, the killing deer or whatever, Staten Island.
But you don't know what that method was?
A non-lethal method.
A non-lethal. I mean, and you said seven million dollars?
Yes, that's what I, yep, that's information I received, yep.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add to that, Council President, that, that there's no secret, there is an issue. And I think the sooner that it is addressed, the better, whether it been last year or this year or the years to come. We've heard a lot of information tonight and a lot of concern. And I'm pretty sure those that are in, in our meeting tonight have also had some experience as well with dealing with this issue. So with that being said, I am ready to vote.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
One additional comment. So initially, I wasn't sure how I would vote for this measure because, you know, last year we discussed how we wanted to consider maybe, you know, I guess, you know, I guess less extreme measures. But it's clear from the residents that spoke up tonight that there is an issue that is affecting the quality of life. And at the end of the day, we as council people, we have an obligation to make sure that we are protecting the best interests of the property taxpayer. You know, unfortunately, deer do not pay property tax here in Plainfield. So we have to make sure that residents are able to enjoy their homes and, you know, that their grandchildren are able to as well. So, you know, with that being said, I will be voting yes.
Council President, I can add to this, just with this resolution itself.
Sure.
Just for everyone to know that we're looking to delete the portion of from October first to December thirty-first, the fall, and we're just going to do the winter because we have to talk into county. So the winter will go from January second to February fifteenth of twenty twenty-one, which is January second twenty twenty-one to February fifteenth twenty twenty-one, the winter hunt. So we're looking just amend this to reflect, not the fall.
So, so I'm sorry, so may I, may I, Council President?
Yes, you may.
So are you saying that we're giving the deer a stay?
No, because of the time we're looking at, because the county, when they did, they did. It would be safer for everybody. They did it that time because against the weather, a little ice and people are out.
So, so a little delay, they'll, they'll just be around.
January, yes, two, yes, to February fifteenth, Councilman.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions, council members?
I do.
Go right ahead, Councilman McKenna.
So, so last year, when, when this was brought up again, I was, I was not on the council and there was a lot of debate and I watched the, I watched the video today and I'm sure most of you watched it too, just so you remember what it was you said. There was a lot of conversation about not wanting to do an inhumane call. And there was a lot of conversation about the fact that the prior attempt at a hunt killed nine deer. So that's pretty much not going to get you anywhere, especially with any of the residents on West Eight who have had issues because those deer are, are unlikely to be moving back and forth from the Cushing Basin over to that. Occasionally, they may wander over there, but they're going to now have, I don't know, a month and a half to get, how many, how many deer do we have in the city, by the way, with the count? Do we know that?
Hard to give you an accurate number. I can say now with everything going on, but at one time it was like twenty-four deer per square mile they counted. Now it's like thirty-five to forty-five per square mile.
Thirty-five. And, you know, just a real quick aside there. Last year, this was in Director Brown's department because he does animal control and health issues. How did it move to Public Works? What was the reason for that?
It was in Public Works prior to that, Councilman McKenna.
Well, if you look at the video, and this was my next point, is that there was going to be some, some educational things that were going to come out of the Health Department about deer, how to, you know, illnesses, issues, plantings, et cetera. Then there was also going to be a presentation done to the council on alternative approaches. The, the more humane approaches, which you, in your answer, you said that what's the difference? Do I believe Councilwoman Davis? And you said humane. Well, there's multiple. They could, there are, there are some where they hit them with a dart and, and do castration, which is obviously more intense. And then there are those where they create feeding areas that have birth control medication in them so that the deer just do not breed and deer don't have a long life, exceptionally long life. So it, it thins that way. At this point, between January second, if, if, how, how many deer, if you do that math, what are we talking about? We're talking about, what, five hundred? I'm going back to the envelope math. So how many, if you did nine in two hunts, a two-part hunt last time, not last year, the year before, you got nine. And this year, inside of six weeks, you're going to kill, I don't know, you're probably going to have to kill three hundred and fifty to make even a remote dent in it. And you better get a lot of bucks. So, you know, I think the issue here is that last year, the council asked the administration to perform a task, which was look for alternatives that we can put into place that do a widespread ability to have control over the deer population. Nothing was done. No report came out, no study was done on feed areas. I, I guarantee I can make a phone call and have fifty volunteers that would set the areas for, for fertility, fertility laced deer feed. And you could have an actual management program instead of every year having this conversation, pitting neighbor against neighbor. I have a, like the deer, I understand the difficulties associated with them. I've been driving down the road when they're eating the, the lawn items that people put out. We could affect that, by the way, by not allowing people to put this stuff out a month ahead of time. So, so there's other things that we can do. We could also start reinforcing speeding and we probably would cut down a couple accidents because I've seen two people going twice the speed limit. But I, I think the reality is this isn't a program. This, it's false to anybody who thinks you're going to call all these deer in a six week period when the majority of those callers came from the other side of town. And, and I don't think those deer are going to go all the way over there. And quite honestly, you may get a bunch of Scotch Plains deer that walked, walked across. So I don't think that the administration had done their, their role last year and what we were looking at now was a comprehensive approach to, to contraceptive feed, feeding areas in multiple parts of, of the city that aren't going to hurt anybody. You're not going to have sharpshooters over on West Eight shooting at deer or with bow and arrow. I'm not sure how you're going to pull that off over there anyway. And, and it would be an actual approach. It would be a true interest in approaching it. This is not that. Six weeks to kill four hundred deer, it, it ain't going to happen. I don't care what anybody says. You got nine the last time over like ten weeks, maybe twelve. So I, I think this is just foolhardy. I think you're going to make a bunch of, you're going to make enemies out of neighbors with each other and you're not doing anything to solve it. I got, I probably had more council emails in a single day today. Emails, texts and phone calls on this issue. There were four and against, and not one of the four calling did not end it with saying, I would be perfectly happy if there was a contraceptive way and a humane way to do it. Not one. I didn't have one person that said, go around and blow their heads off. And I'm sure there are a couple out there, but I think the reality is we're not listening to the public. We're going to pit everybody against each other. We're going to end up killing twelve deer and have a bunch of neighbors mad at each other. It, it's just, this is a program. So I wish that the administration had, had lived up to what they said they were going to do last year and provided some comprehensive information. There's a lot out there. I've done some research. There's a lot out there that I haven't even gotten all the way through. But there's not just one way to do a humane call and, and nothing else. So.
Well, Councilman, if you come up with a method, you'll be a rich man. If you come up with a method that can take care of these deer, because everybody's looking for one, that's for sure. Staten Island, like I said, spent close to seven million dollars for what they're trying to do. I'm just making that clear to you based on what's going on.
I got it. I, I did some of that research myself and there are some other methods and I'd be happy to send them to you, not that it makes any difference because we're just going to go kill ten of them in a field.
Council President, I have a follow-up question.
Go right ahead.
I think Councilman, Councilman McKenna made some very valid points. One being that the area is not going to really handle the deer problem. And the mayor spoke earlier and said if he could, he would widen the area. So Director Dabney, is it possible for us to widen the scope of where we're doing this deer hunt at? Is my first question. If you want to answer that first, that's fine.
Well, that's something that the mayor mentioned too, but that's something we'll talk to with the county because the county controls everything that's going on with this as we do this. So yes, we would talk to them about the other areas that we may have once they assess the areas because there's only certain places you know you can shoot or do things because of the population, you have to stay far away from residential neighborhoods and areas when you do this. So yes, that's something we can look and we'll talk to them about and see what, what can be done.
Okay. And my second comment is, like Councilman McKenna said, today I have received more emails in a single council day about the deer hunt than I have in a while since I've been on the council. And while I love public participation in our process here in the city, it is also slightly concerning to me, especially when we talk about having neighbors against neighbors. Because I really hope that we keep the same energy when we have, when we're trying to tackle other problems in the city, like food insecurity for other residents in the city, violence in the city. I heard one caller, I, maybe I misheard them, but they equated the violence in the city with the violence of the deer hunt. And I'm going to hope that I misheard them because that's very concerning to me that we're equating the violence against people with the violence against deers. But while I am happy that we have so many residents on the call, it's my hope that we keep the same energy to solve other problems in the city, such as food insecurity, such as the disproportionate rates that COVID is affecting members of our community, such as the violence that are happening in different parts of this municipality. The deer problem is not a problem that is singular to one ward or one section of the city. As we've seen tonight, it's across all four wards. So I think when we think about doing what's best for the city, we need to think about, I know I think about doing what's best for the residents who voted to elect me. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Follow-up question for Director Dabney. So Director Dabney, I know you don't speak for the county, but since this, this is a county-run program, do you have any reason to believe that they're going to do this countywide? Or are they just select cities or towns that they're doing this in?
They go through the, they assess the entire county when they do this. County, yes, all the towns.
Okay. Just a side note if I may, Council President?
Sure.
They, they do assess it, but then the municipalities have to.
Well, that's why we're here tonight, right? For the vote. And I'm just saying, right? Yes, you're right.
You're actually having a conversation with Councilman Armani.
Oh, I, okay. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay.
Council President?
Yes. Councilwoman?
Yes. I really would like to call and vote. I'd like to put it to, we're pretty split a lot of time.
You're right. No additional questions. We will, I'll entertain a motion.
Obey it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Clerk, can you have a roll call?
I, yes, Council President, I believe Director Dabney said that there needed to be a motion to amend the, the resolution for the dates in there.
Okay.
Mr. Dabney, if you could just repeat those dates so council members can make a motion to amend the resolution appropriately.
Yes, we're, we're deleting the fall bull season of October first twenty twenty to December thirty-first twenty twenty and keeping winter bull season of January second twenty twenty-one to February fifteenth twenty twenty-one. It's said fourteenth, but it should be the fifteenth twenty twenty-one.
I'd like to introduce a motion using those dates.
Second.
Okay. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Okay. Clerk, are we just voting on the, the amendment or we want voting on the entire thing?
Voting on the amendments first.
You have three amendments.
As amendment.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, let's have a roll call for the amendment.
Council Members Davis?
Yes.
Good? Councilman Good? You're on mute.
Sorry. Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Resolution's been amended. Motion's still on the floor to adopt.
Okay, can we have a motion in a second?
Both. Obey it.
Okay, Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Roll call on resolution two sixty-two dash twenty, Council Members Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
If in favor, want to oppose, resolution passes.
Okay, Clerk, please read two sixty-four dash twenty.
Resolution two sixty-three dash twenty authorizing change order number one for the Woodland Avenue roadway improvement project to top line construction.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? This motion is approved.
Resolution two sixty-four twenty authorizing approval to submit a grant agreement with Union County for the twenty twenty Kids Recreation Trust funded grants.
We have questions from council members. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two sixty-five twenty authorizing the award of a professional services contract to Remington and Vernick Engineers.
We have questions from council members. Have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two six-six twenty authorizing the award of a contract to Integrity Roofing Incorporated.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
So this is the second company that we're looking at to do this work? Are we sure that they can handle the scope of this project, being that their bid was almost half of what the other two bids were?
Yes, Councilwoman, they would have no choice. They were the lowest responsible bidder. We're going to monitor the project and make sure to do that. There's a two-year maintenance bond on the project that if they come back and do anything that comes out wrong. So yes, we'll monitor that.
So, I don't know if this is a legitimate question, but my concern is it was half of what the other people chose. So how do we know they're not underbidding? And then now when it's time to do the project, they don't have enough or they realize that the materials they had weren't quality. I'm just really concerned about how much lower their bid was than the next two.
Well, I guess by local public contracts law, we have to go with the lowest bid and, and take it from there. And if any change orders ever come before, we'll look at the change order and see what happens. I mean, if there are any unforeseen's that would happen, as long as it doesn't exceed the next lowest bid, which was three hundred and seven thousand dollars. So when you look at the numbers, one eighty-eight, five forty-eight versus the highest bid being four forty, four hundred and forty-one thousand, yes, they'll be in ballpark no matter what, as long as this doesn't exceed nowhere near the next lowest bid. If we ever had any unforeseen's, we need a change orders. So it'll still be well below the number that the highest bidder was. And again, this is local public contracts law. We're being, we're in compliance with when we do this.
I get what you're saying. So maybe this is a question for a corporation counsel. Does that law protect us from people? Like, I don't, I don't know these companies, but is there a possibility that people underbid to get contracts? Right? And then when it's time to do the work, right, we're not getting the same quality had we gone with somebody who actually bid what it really costs to make it happen? Is there any protections for the municipality?
Well, Councilwoman Davis, you're, you're, I understand your question. And, and I think direct, first and foremost, Director Dabney is absolutely right. Local public contracts law requires us, if the, if the bidder meets all of the statutory criteria and, and provides, and provides all the relevant documents and meets the scope of services in the bid, we are required, if they are the lowest responsible bidder, to go with that, with that bidder. So we have no choice under local public contracts law. But they still have to comply with the scope of work as provided by Director Dabney in the bid specs. So if they can't live up to those bid specs, that's a separate issue and then that becomes a legal issue.
A legal issue.
If they come for a change order, they're going to have to prove to Director Dabney before he moves it before council that this was something that was unforeseen or outside of the specs as they were drafted. Beyond that, there's, there are bonds, as Director Dabney said. And it will be, there's likely on this project, Director Dabney, tell me if I'm wrong, there'll be a two-year maintenance bond.
Correct.
After that's performed, if within two years, any problems, we have insurance. That's a bond that's, that's paid for by the contractor that's for our benefit and will ultimately provide us with insurance if something goes. and will ultimately provide us with insurance if something goes wrong. So those are the only protections, and those are all the legal protections that we can take as a city to ensure that the project is done right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council members? Can we have a motion and?
Just have one quick question, Councilman. What, remind me again what their issue was, because this was done during Mayor Robinson Brick's tenure, I believe, right? If I'm not mistaken, what happened to it?
From what I gather, nothing was pretty much done right up there when it was done. I mean, the work wasn't done to standard the way it should have been in terms of the brick around the decouplé. That's what happened there.
Okay, so, so Councilwoman Davis's words are important. We gotta get it right this next time.
Hopefully so. And we're gonna monitor to make sure it's done right. Yeah, that's a big thing, so. To make sure, and again, there was a low responsible bidder, and of course, we do always watch the numbers to see the low bid to the highest bidder. And based on change orders, can't go exceed, I think, like 20% anyway, so as they go beyond. So it'll never get to that second lowest bidder numbers. So it can never exceed the dollar amount that Councilman Davis is worried about. It can never get that far.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 267-20, authorizing approval to submit a grant application with the Union County Department of Human Service.
Questions from council members? Do we have a motion and a second?
Both.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposition? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 268-20, authorizing the purchase of an aerial bucket truck for the Signal Division.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
Aye.
The opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 269-20, authorizing a lean placement for property cleanup.
Any questions from council members? And if not, we'll take, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
No moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 270-20, authorizing an application and execution of a grant agreement with Union County Division of Aging and the State of New Jersey for the Plainfield Senior Center.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Um, while I think this is a great grant and a great thing to do, I just have two questions. How would the senior center fairly distribute these tablets? I know in there, they said that they were going to call the seniors, but how are they gonna decide? Like, who should they call first? Like, what's gonna be a way that they do this that is equitable to everyone? Like, if it's in alphabetical order, if your last name starts with a Z, then you add a L. So is there a plan to make this as equitable as possible to make sure that seniors across the city that are members of the senior center can have access to this opportunity?
Yes, that's a good question. What they're doing is assessing all the seniors, because some of them do have their own computers and they have a list of them that do. So they're gonna look at the ones that don't to try to assist them with that and get them the proper training so they can have one. If they so choose, some of them don't want them. So there's a whole list of seniors that are on a list that will be, no one will be left out. They'll ask them all, 16 and above, that if they're interested in that, and a lot of them do have them already, that they've been using for the programs that's been going on. So they do have a list, and they'll monitor it that way to make sure they're fair to everyone.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, are we gonna look for more grants of this type to provide this service? Because I think it's great. It's just unfortunate that it's only 50 for this first time.
And Councilman, yes, that's your question, yes, we will. We're gonna apply for as many as we can with that. That's the job she's doing now to make sure. Matter of fact, they've been asked if we can see we can get other grant like this for more. They're gonna look into that to see if it's available. So yes, we're gonna continue to monitor that, because it is a good program for everything that's going on, even after the pandemic. It's something good, I think, so.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, do we have a motion and a second?
No moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved. Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 271-20, authorizing approval to transfer funds to replenish the existing UEZ Sign and Facade Grant Program to assist the beautification and growth of local businesses.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
What exactly are the beautification strategies? And will these monies be distributed to individual businesses? And if they will, how would, is that a grant? Is it a loan? How exactly will it be distributed?
Okay, so the Sign and Facade Grant Program has been around for several years now in the city of Plainfield, and it's for individual businesses and/or landlords. And it allows them to do improvements to the facade of their building, which includes the exterior, windows, all of those wonderful things. They have to be a UEZ business to be eligible for the grant. There's a 25% match requirement associated with the grant. And so we reimburse 75%. They have to meet our sign and facade, our sign guidelines. And they would bring that in for review along with their application.
How many businesses have we already given this grant to? And how many businesses have struggled with meeting that matching part of that 25%? Do we know what the declination rate is for this program?
Really, no one has declined the assistance, to my knowledge. The 25% match has not been a problem. We funded, the last funding of this grant was for 250,000. So I'm estimating that we provided assistance to 10 to 12 businesses, but I can get an exact count and afford that to council per year, what we have provided in the way of assistance.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Any other questions from council members?
I have a question. I think it's a great program. I mean, we're granting money, it's their own money. We're giving back to them, in essence, roughly. But I think it's a good program. You know, 10 a year or 10 a period or whatever, that length of time for the 250 isn't isn't gonna get us through a lot of those locations. And I'm wondering what we're gonna, what we can do to get the others in compliance with our sign. Because I can, I can tell, you know, there are certainly some that are, that are permitted non-conforming, because the rules changed since they got their sign. But there are, there are many down there that are not even, you know, throughout downtown that are not even remotely in compliance with any sign ordinance.
Yes, so prior to the pandemic, we had a program called Activate Downtown where we were educating businesses and owners about beautification. We diverted some of those funds earlier this year to provide direct assistance for businesses for rent payments, for utilities, for staff, all of those kinds of things. So we've allocated about $260,000 as part of the COVID-19 relief fund, and that's gone to about 36 businesses. And so we're giving them the assistance that they're requesting at this time. If we do actually have to come back and replenish the Sign and Facade Program, there are still funds available in the UEZ fund to do that. And we're continuing to educate businesses on how to be more attractive. We're working with the SID to also educate businesses on how to be more attractive at inviting a location.
Can I suggest instead of 260,000 that we, and I remember when we moved that money and I agreed with the assistance during the lockdown, but with the code enforcement department. And if we're gonna use the SID, which is one and a half people, to educate everybody downtown on how to, how to, you know, not cover all, what is it, 25% of their windows and to have us sign them and clean the front of their stores every day, I mean, we're gonna lose this until forever.
Yeah, we are using code enforcement, but the SID acts as the advocate on behalf of the businesses. So most SID Business Improvement Districts are very lean staffing. They don't have more than two to four people. So their reach is that they're constantly day in, day out, thinking about the businesses and sending messages to the businesses. Our office does that as well. And so when I distribute messages on business resources and the things that businesses should be doing, I'm distributing it to my team to get the message out, as well as to the SID to get the message out. And we use every avenue available to us through social media. So, and we have business lists, so we're, we've got a pretty good outreach to the businesses. For example, one of the things we've discussed is the SID coming up with a sidewalk sweeper to assist with the beautification of the core downtown area. And so those are all, SIDS typically help with funding additional maintenance, additional beautification. So there are best practices among improvement districts. And so that's what they help to assist with. They help to fund additional resources for the municipality as it relates to maintenance, beautification, even safety.
I, you know, I think that's interesting. How do they buy a street sweeper with a $130,000 budget and one and a half employees?
Their budget is perhaps more than 130,000, but they can elect at any time, assuming their constituency is in agreement, they can elect at any time to assess a higher rate to themselves.
I mean, we have a DPW and a PMUA that we're spending a lot of money on, and nobody can come up with a sidewalk sweeper. We have to raise taxes on the businesses downtown, the property owners? We'll save that. This is UEZ, so we'll save that conversation.
Other questions from council members? Do we have a motion and a second?
No moved.
Okay. Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hakada?
Yes.
Resolution 272-20, authorizing the application and acceptance of an application to the National Science Foundation Program Disaster Resilience Research Grant.
Any questions from council members? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 273-20, designating 187, 191 North Avenue Renewal LLC as redevelopers of certain properties.
We have questions from council members? And none? Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
No moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved. Okay, we now move to general public comments. A total of 60 minutes has been allocated. For all public comments to be presented, each speaker will be allotted up to five minutes. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. At that time, give your name and address for the record. Each, the floor is now open. Okay, I don't know what it says. NAPIW, you are highlighted now. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Nancy P. for 1129 Myrtle Avenue. I wanted to speak on the other ordinance, and I didn't get a chance to do it. So I don't know whether it was a technical difficulty or not, but so I'll reserve my comment.
No, that's, you can speak now. This is general public comment. You can speak regarding any issue, Nancy.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's already been passed over what I wanted to talk about, so.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, if you already passed it, so what's the point of me talking about it, you know? That was, that was my issue. But, you know, maybe there is something I'd like to talk about. I think we need to do something about the noise ordinance and permitting of parties, because it's getting to be a real problem every weekend now, especially with COVID. People are moving outside of their homes and outside of public venues in order to have parties. And the music goes on to all times of the night, and it's fine, but, you know, they're not zoned. Our residential areas are not zoned for this, and it's a real problem. Plus, we have permits for garage sales, and they take place during the day, and there's no alcohol involved, but parties take place at night. And it keeps all the other area residents up at night. And, you know, it gets disconcerting to have to, you know, ask the police to come by and ask people to turn down the music. But it's a real problem, and I just want to bring that issue back up to the city council that we should consider doing something about permitting parties, because a lot of them are using professional DJs with heavy-duty sound equipment that rocks, you know, two, three, four, five blocks all the time, and it's getting, you know, more and more. It was before COVID, but it's even more distressing on weekends and even during the week in some areas in town. And it's just an idea that I had. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker for public comment? Okay. Name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Sam Sekita Cooper, Brokaw Boulevard in Plainfield. I would like to echo the, my neighbor from Myrtle Avenue in reference to the noise ordinance. Definitely, there has been more outside activity as it pertains to people coming over, visiting, having gatherings outside and not having a respect for their fellow neighbors. I would also like to add to the deer conversation. There were a lot of conversation around Sleepy Hollow area, Denmark, Cushing, et cetera. On the complete opposite side of town by Rock Avenue and Myrtle, there's a huge deer population there as well. I too have been hit by a deer in broad daylight in my car, where he ran, he or she ran across the street, and I attempted to avoid them and could not, had my child in the car. I am not a fan of inhumanely taking care of them. And if there is another way that they could be silenced or moved to another location, I would hope that we would consider that and also have it be a teachable moment for the younger citizens of this city. I would like to remind the council that this call is for us. And it appeared that there was one or two, and I'm not going to call anybody out, because I believe in being respectful, and that's the way we, as a community, should be. But there was a few comments, or should I say, there were a few comments that were made that insinuated that we were belaboring some of the issues that were brought up tonight. So I would hope that the council would be mindful of that as we don't have the opportunity to gather and have conversations as much as we should. And to a point about the deer population, perhaps there should have been some more thought put into perhaps there should have been some more thought put into having a conversation prior to tonight's meeting in regards to that, since there were so many people that came on to speak about that. And as one of the council people, um, spoke about, there appears to be conversation that was had last year and actions were not, um, taken care of as they should have been. So now here we are again with this same situation. So I would just ask if we would just put a little bit more thought into us, the five or ten people who are coming on these calls, and maybe we can just do a little better with some of the issues that seem to get more attraction. And that's all I have for tonight, but thank you for my time.
Thank you for your comments, Cooper. Okay, the name says Laverne, you can be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record. Go right ahead, Laverne. All right, uh, perhaps she's having audio issues. Okay, Mrs. Berwinkle, you are, uh, now unmuted. Please unmute yourself and speak, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mary Berwinkle, seventeen eighty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane. Um, I'd like to comment on the, what I consider to be the lack of transparency surrounding the suit the city started to sell the beer stat paintings. Um, three years ago in two thousand seventeen, there was a committee appointed by the mayor to discuss that issue and the committee voted unanimously against doing it. And I didn't hear much about it until recently and learned that litigation was filed on August seventh to get permission to sell them. Um, there was a council meeting on August tenth and neither the mayor nor Corporation Council mentioned it at that meeting or asked council for the money to conduct litigation or for any approval that I heard. Um, since then, I have scoured the website. There has been no press release, there's no, there wasn't a release of the two thousand seventeen committee on this issue report. Um, there's no detail at all from the administration that I can see. And I, and I'm, I understand that there's a hearing tomorrow on this. Um, I'm really, I'm just surprised that the mayor thinks that he can sue to sell potentially millions of dollars of city property without any real meaningful notice to the public. Um, the mayor ran on a transparency platform and that has apparently been abandoned unfortunately. Um, on the deer, I have one tiny comment on the deer, there are too many of them. I feel bad for them and for us. But my backyard and most of my neighbors' backyards border on Scotch Plains. And the Scotch Plains deer come over to snack on our stuff every day. And if ours get killed, they won't stop. They're just going to keep walking over from Scotch Plains. So my thought is that perhaps, um, something needs to be done, but maybe it needs to be a regional approach. You know, I mean, it's, it's not going to stop the deer from coming from North Plainfield or Scotch Plains or anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have a caller, uh, just a phone number. Please state your name and address for the record.
Laura Yednikowski, William Place, Plainfield. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, you may speak.
Yes. So the decision for the, um, deer kill is really quite unfortunate, but it also applies in the face of the twenty-five years when hunting has been used to try and control deer population. I think there are going to be plenty of disappointed people, maybe in particular on West A Street by Mayor Map's house, because, um, it's not going to do what they hope to do, uh, to, hope to have done. And yes, in other towns, uh, there are, there have been pilot programs in, in Ohio and Staten Island and Hastings and Hudson, which have, uh, promising results, uh, using non-lethal, um, methods for deer control. Plainfield maybe doesn't realize that they were guinea pigs back in two thousand seventeen. I don't know how that arrangement was made, but that was the first time that, uh, a, um, bow and arrow hunt was done in the residential area or in an area that borders very closely to residential area. The reason you can't use shotguns is because of the, the proximity to, to houses. So they had to use crossbows. Um, and I thank, um, Councilwoman McKenna for his thoughtful comments and his progressive, uh, thoughts concerning the, the, um, deer population. I actually don't see deer that I think are unhealthy. I think they're looking quite healthy these days. And that's to respond to one caller who said, uh, he thought they weren't healthy. And yes, um, um, Councilwoman Davis, I did say that there is a connection between violence to people and violence to animals and that I do stand by that comment. And I'd be happy to provide you with some information to support that. Thank you.
Next caller? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, again, this goes back to the unfortunate deer resolution. Congratulations, Mayor Map. I'm really, really sorry that you did not allow more time for this discussion, nor did you allow time, um, for your administration to do what was decided on last September. It could have worked, it could have been worth a try. And I do agree with the caller who said there's going to be disappointed people because if you look at the twenty-six years of yearly kills of deer in Union County, the complaints are still there. So what makes anyone think this one's going to be different? Um, the one thing that's kind of off, off note here, I have no idea what the caller, I believe it was Mr. Plummer, meant by, he didn't have a beach house. If someone has a beach house out there that they're not sharing, I would love to know who it is. Um, I, I just found that a very unusual comment. And again, congratulations, Mayor Map. You did get, um, you did get your kill put through. And it's unfortunate, but we will still stand by non-lethal methods when we review this and find out that it's just not going to work. And I do hope that all the new people moving into Plainfield will be advised that the killing fields are right in their own neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Priano, please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Timothy Priano, fourteen oh five Martine Avenue. Simply, um, I'm just shocked, but why should I be shocked? In two thousand and seventeen, I paid for attorneys to fight to keep the beer stats here in Plainfield. Uh, Renato Birbin worked his whole life trying to save those to keep them in Plainfield as a treasure here. But in the dark of the night, between council meetings, and they thought they could get it through to the courts on September eleventh to sell this off, it's just really sad that we're losing art. Whatever it may be, it doesn't make a difference, it's art. Everyone has their opinion about it. And if we just kept our treasures so that we enjoy them later on, today's not the moment, we're in the middle of a pandemic, no one's buying Hudson Valley art. If we would have displayed them, that people could see them at the very last moments. But I'm sure we'll wait for the judge's appeal, uh, call tomorrow. Ninety-nine percent chance the paintings will be sold and the proceeds will go to the eighteen heirs that are left to Dr. Coles. It will be left without paintings and no money to show for it. But then again, I've only lived in Plainfield because I believed in the arts, but David is taking away from us. But we do our best to keep the arts rolling here in Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Becky.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'd also like to address the proposed sale of the beer stat paintings. Um, and I'd like to make a brief comment, but before I do, I have three questions for the Corporation Council, if I'm allowed to do that. Um, David, where's Dave?
I'm, I'm here. Uh, you can ask the questions, um, you know, we'll see if he has answers available uh, at the conclusion of all public comments. So you can, you can go right-
These are actually legal questions about the Plainfield Promise, which I would assume that, uh, you would, we would have the answers to. Uh, my first question is, is the Plainfield Promise registered as a charitable organization with the IRS and with the state of New Jersey? Secondly, who are the officers of this organization and when were they elected? And number three, um, I can't find a nine ninety for, for Plainfield Promise. Um, I'm assuming that one has not been filed, so why has one not been filed? Those are my questions.
Are the entirety of your comments?
No, I'd like to make a comment after I get the answers to the questions.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to arrange you to speak with the corporate council separately. It's not a question and answer, uh, situation with the public comment.
Okay, in that case, then I'll just proceed to make a comment. Um, I can find no evidence that the Plainfield Promise is registered as a five oh one C three organization with the state of New Jersey. Um, I didn't check IRS registration. But if you're going to operate as a charitable organization in New Jersey, you must be registered with the Attorney General's Office. No such registration is on file. Uh, there are numerous exemptions for filing a nine ninety, but, uh, none apply to this foundation. If it is a foundation, um, it meets the financial requirements, um, it doesn't meet any of the exemptions. So there's no reason why it should not have filed a nine ninety for the three years it's been in existence. Um, if this is a foundation, who are the officers of the foundation? When were they elected? Um, are there minutes of the meetings? All these things are legal requirements for a, for a nonprofit corporation. Um, I don't believe that we need as a municipality to operate a nonprofit organization and I'm not sure that legally, uh, this, the municipality has the standing to do so. Um, we do have an organization, a five oh one C three organization in Plainfield called the Queen City Promise, which is a registered, uh, legitimate five oh one C three organization, which, working with the cooperation of the Plainfield School District, hopes to achieve, um, the same aims. And I applaud, uh, the mayor for his, his ambition and his aims. I think they're worthy aims. I just don't think that the city of Plainfield is the right organization to house a, a foundation. Um, I applaud also the city for their success in getting developers to come through. I think that, uh, a lot of towns try that. A lot of towns don't have the success that we've had, so I think that's a, really a very good thing. But I think that there are many areas that, that money could be spent to benefit a wider, um, a wider range of Plainfield residents. You know, if you look at tonight's agenda, for example, purchasing fire trucks, uh, those are things that, um, you know, improving infrastructure, improving the downtown, those are all things that developer awards could go towards that would greatly benefit the city. So I do think it's regrettable that once again, we are, are back in court to attempt to sell the beer stats. Um, I don't think they should be sold, but more importantly, I don't think that the city of Plainfield should be attempting to operate, um, a, a supposedly nonprofit organization.
Thank you for your comments. I said, that's, uh, Nancy again, uh, I think she already spoke. So, go to the next person. Okay, Niambi Harris, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Niambi Daniels Harris, sixty-three Andover Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Um, it's a follow-up question and another comment. Um, several, I think it was two months ago, I expressed a concern about being pulled over by, um, law officers from other townships and wanted to know if there was any follow-up or action taken, um, by the council or, um, the attorneys. Um, there was mention that there would be follow-up, that's my first question. And the second is, um, as I spend more time now that I work from home and walking around the community, I'm concerned that I've seen a lot of littering, um, by my house, a lot of my neighbor houses, um, because people, uh, you have a lot of contractors, a lot, a lot of work is being done. And, um, they'll eat lunch and all of a sudden there's bottles and papers and all left by our yards or on the driveway on the road. So what, as a, um, resident of Plainfield, taxpaying resident, we can do, um, to implement some ordinances where people are fined if they do litter, we do see them, um, and try to control that? And those are my comments and, or questions.
Okay. Ms. Coons, please state your name and address for the record.
Dora, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Sharice Coons, one forty-one McKinley Place in Plainfield. Uh, I have a couple of, uh, comments tonight. Um, I am surprised that, and, and maybe, maybe I, I missed the comments. I was surprised to hear no one talking about, um, the violence that has ensued in the city, you know, with the, with the, the shootings of late and, um, just the, the level of violence that has been going on in the city. Um, it, it is really concerning to me, um, that, I don't know if it's anything that's being addressed, I don't see anyone from public safety here tonight, but I'd really like to, to hear and understand what the city is doing to, um, oh, yep, I'm sorry, there you go. Sorry, Lisa, I di- I didn't see you there. Um, I'd like to have an understanding of what the city is doing to address the, the rise in violence. You know, that is, uh, one comment that I had. And, you know, tipi- I haven't been on a city council meeting, uh, in a while, uh, but when I do come on, I will, I, I have a general topic that I will discuss and that is lighting in the city. This city is too dim. You know, the, the lighting in the city is awful. You know, I have talked about the lighting in the city for, I know, at least the five, the last five or six years. Um, and I'd like to, to see, you know, something being addressed. I live, um, on McKinley Place, um, right off of East Second Street and, um, but the lighting here is dim. I, I feel like I need to sit on my front porch with a glass of wine. You know, it's like, you know, we've set the mood, but I think we need to light up this city, you know, because it's, it's too dark, it allows too much to happen. Uh, and my, uh, third comment is about the noise ordinance. Uh, I know that there were other, um, callers who talked about the noise and the fact that, that the parties have ensued. Uh, and I will tell you that, you know, where I live on McKinley Place, um, you know, we've called the police, you know, about the parties and the noise and, you know, they just don't come. Um, so we, we really need to address the, the noise, you know, the level of noise that happens in the city. And the last comment that I have, um, is related to, um, Ms. Levinson. And, you know, I appreciate, um, Ms. Levinson and I, I, I wish you luck in your, your new role in the city. Uh, but what I will say is it's really concerning to me, um, that we're taking two full-time jobs and, um, having one person do two full-time jobs. That's really, that's really concerning to me. Now, I know, you know, I, I don't work in a nonprofit arena, I work in a, a for-profit arena. And I know that when that is typically done in a for-profit arena, the person that it's done for is someone who is an expert, I mean, an absolute expert in the two jobs that they're taking on. And I didn't hear, um, Ms. Levinson, um, address hers, herself as being an expert in all of the aspects that the complete, the combined role would, uh, would entail. So I mean, I wish you luck, um, but I have concerns there and I hope that, you know, it's something that is, is being, um, monitored closely. And I'm sorry, I did have one, one other item, uh, that I wanted to talk about and it's the deer. I know a lot of folks have talked about the deer. Um, I live in a part of the city where deer, you know, deer are not a major problem. But what I will tell you is, um, just as someone, as I- what I will tell you is, just as someone, as I drive through the city and I have to drive back to my property, you have to be very strategic and tactical about where you drive in the evening in the city. You know, as I'm, I don't do woodland. I'm very careful on Park Avenue. I don't do Kensington. There's just certain parts of the city where you do not drive at night, because first off, it's dark, goes back to my lighting comment, and you just never know when a deer is going to, to jump out and, and it be an issue. Those are my comments for tonight, and thank you for allowing me to address the council.
You're welcome. Have a good night, Ms. Coons. All right, we have Jeanette. You are now able to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Jeanette Crishon, 1410 Evergreen Avenue in Plainfield, New Jersey. I just have one question. How is Becky going to know the answer to those questions that she asked? And then how will the rest of us know the answer to those questions? Thank you.
Considering you're the last caller for public comment, we can close public comment, and then I'll ask our, our council to address Becky's question. So may I have a motion to close public comment?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public comment is now closed. Okay, Mr. Manchello, could you address any of the nonprofit issues that were, that were raised?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. First, Becky's question starts from the false premise that these paintings have to be held by a nonprofit. Just for clarification, these two paintings are city property. No, there's never been an indication or any proposal that would include giving them to a nonprofit or the profits of those paintings to any nonprofit. The Plainfield Promise is a, has three pillars to it, but it is a, it is a city program. And there is no non, these proceeds would not be given to any nonprofit. They would be city proceeds to be used for the three pillars of the Plainfield Promise program. So there's no requirement whatsoever that either the paintings or the funds be placed with a nonprofit.
Okay. There's also-
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just expand on Mr. Manchello's answer update. In New Jersey, there are only three ways that a municipal or county government can spend money. One is by an appropriation in the budget. Two is by a capital ordinance. And three is by what is known as a dedication by rider. Another name for dedication by rider is a trust fund. And the city, with the approval of the council, submitted an application by resolution to the Division of Local Government Services, maybe a year or two years ago, it might have even been longer, to create a dedication of rider known as the Plainfield Promise. And so that gives the city the authorization to spend money for the stated purpose. And so there is no need to create a nonprofit for the purpose of spending the proceeds that would be generated from the sale of these paintings, one being a very racist painting, especially in these times of Black Lives Matter, showing Indians bowing down to Christopher Columbus, who never set foot on North America. And so it's the racism in these paintings that people ought not to overlook. And so the authority to spend funds that may be generated from these paintings are embedded in New Jersey statute, namely, the statute that provides for the creation of a dedication by rider, which in this case is the Plainfield Promise. Thank you.
Okay, I also would like litter question answered. Could Director Dabney or Director Burgess, whether litter ordinance or what could be done to, to help to beautify our town? You know, is, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, again, we're going to be aggressive with issuing summonses to those and educating folks about not throwing, breathing the street. I wish their caller gave you an address so I could look into what that construction job was, what he was eating lunch and throwing garbage along the street. We want to look into that and address that. I mean, litter, of course, we've got to educate folks on what they shouldn't be doing, what they should be doing as far as litter. And, you know, again, getting back to the street sweeping and doing other things to, to try to offset that. But no matter what we do, we're going to, the education component is so key to everything, because you can be out there all day cleaning and sweeping, and people throwing garbage down behind you as you go along, that becomes a major issue. So it's an education, education as well as enforcement to, to address these litter issues throughout the city. And you need more, a little more litter patrol enforcement out there to get it done. And of course, you know, we're a little under manned, but we're going to look what we can do to see how we can offset that by using equipment more so than the manpower that we lack. So we'll do, we'll do the best we can to try to address all litter problems, which is frustrating for all of us, because it doesn't fall out the sky. Folks throw garbage in the street, they don't put it out right, and sometimes they don't respect the laws. So we're going to address all of that, every litter problem that get, again, we're frustrated with everything like everyone else is, and we see it, and we try to address it the best we can. And we're going to continue to try to do better, because everything we do does always improve for improvement. And that's something we'll, let's see how we can take care of that for the litter problem.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Council President?
President, there was one other question that a resident asked, and I think it, I think the way she said it was a little confusing, but I remembered it because I had it in my notes, and it was for, for Mr. Manchello, which it was Naomi Harris, and she had brought up the issue of being pulled over by non-Plainfield officers. I don't think it was the last council meeting, I think it might have been the one prior, but the, the response that I think she's referring to, somebody was going to look into it, you had offered to do an investigation of that. And, and you were going to do that. And I don't recall what that investigation entailed, but that was what you had offered to do.
Yeah. And Councilwoman Davis, you had a question as well?
Yes. So Mr. Dabney talked about litter enforcement and litter education. Who is responsible for enforcing ordinances concerning the litter in this community?
That's a combination of both, our inspection division and the PMU.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes?
Never mind, never mind. She logged off. Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. I have a question. I would be remiss if I didn't ask this question, because it was brought up several times with a couple of the callers for Director Burgess. What is the police division doing for those residents that have to be, can consistently be reminded to turn down their music? I have been getting calls, texts, and emails from people who say that the police have been coming to the same addresses over and over and over again. And I'm just curious, what's the limit? How many times does, you know, the officers have to come to a house before they're issued a summons because of the noise ordinance violation?
There's not a specific limit. I think that it, we look into the guidelines of what the current ordinance is, the time of day, it can be-
I'm sorry, my apologies.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. And the time of day, and then whether or not it can be subjective. I do know that there has been a large number of complaints that we're getting in regards to it. We are attempting to address it in a manner. There's some specific locations that were more than just a local, you know, family gathering situation, and we've been addressing those situations as well with inspections, the Quality of Life Task Force, but also putting more enforcement on to the issuing of the ordinances. But again, looking at what the ordinance is, the time of day, because we're getting them all through the day and through the night. The night is much more easier to deal with, especially if it's past the timeframe, that's what's in the ordinance. But I want to assure you and the residents that this is an area of concern that we are addressing and trying to do the best that we can, in understanding that more people are home. This is what is probably causing this, or more people are attempting to socialize from their homes. But, you know, we're, and the other area of, I won't say concern, but what happens is a lot of times the, by the time we get the call, whether we're getting it directly to the police department or it's coming through one of the members of this council, sometimes we get there and what you've been hearing or they've been hearing is not what's going on at that time. So I encourage residents to call exactly when it's going on and not have a time delay, but also understanding most of the time, it's a Friday or Saturday night, as well as those calls also get prioritized, depending on how busy the night is going at that time. But we do value the quality of life of all the residents and are trying to do our best to handle those noise complaints as they come.
Thank you, Director. Council President, thank you.
You're welcome. And Council President, so I would say, just, you know, during the head of tonight's meeting, I'm not sure if we got to accurately discuss item 25320, which was the annual audit. So Mayor Mapp or Director West, I don't know if you guys wanted to share for the general public just information about the audit and the significance of the last one.
Why, thank you for that opportunity. Since I didn't get any questions tonight, I didn't get a chance to intervene or interject that. I do want the council and the public to know that in, for the first time in at least well in excess of 20 years, the audit was outstanding from the perspective that we had no findings. And I want to congratulate the whole team, including the support from the council, for helping to achieve that. But no audit findings.
That's one-
Thank you for the opportunity to let the world know that in order to the audit findings, we had a great year.
That's awesome. Good work, Director.
Thank you.
So, Councilor Manchello, it was just that one outstanding question regarding individuals being pulled over in neighboring municipalities. I mean, this has been an ongoing issue for, for years, for decades at least. So was there some follow-up regarding that in terms of, was it, going to be looking into that?
Yes, we are still in the process of gathering information. But I'm sure, I'm sure many Plainfielders may have read and the council's aware that there has been a change in leadership at the Fanwood Police Department. Specifically, the police chief was caught making some incredibly racist remarks, and the Union County Prosecutor's Office has taken over in the borough of Fanwood. So I'm sure we're all pleased to see that. And, but obviously now that the Union County Prosecutor's Office has taken a greater role, we have tried to revise some of our requests for information, but we're still in the process of figuring out how to gather that information. But as soon as we have real data that we can share with council, we will.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn now.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.